It's five fifteen, I call for order, the meeting on the planning commission of Miami, March, October, twenty twenty-three. For what everyone agrees to, and by additions. But I really like you that super. From the, from the role colleagues. Commissioner Miller. President. Senator President. Commissioner, we're calling in. Yeah. Commissioner Gray.
You're.
Commissioner Vermaat.
I'm here, but it's very difficult to hear everybody.
Commissioner Deveraux. Commissioner Bunch.
Good evening.
And Commissioner Ryle. Okay, great, so I'll ask everyone to please speak into their mic. We can as well as also have to have the pride to be difficult for the commission members who are online to hear. And they just, and. So we need approval of the minutes. Public has the public approval of the minutes, according to date twenty-three, October twenty-four, twenty-two, December twelve, twenty-two, and January twenty-three, July, August. I think that.
I move that we approve all those minutes.
Second, we have, and well, Jackson, I'll consider the news stuff for you. Okay, this is from the public. Persons, one is the provide comments, may email written comments to city of Albany, at cityofalbany.net, include your name, or do on the day of the meeting. To comment virtually during the meeting, registered by emailing C A D A A at cityofalbany.net, before do on the day of the meeting with your name. The chair will call on those who have registered to speak. And here the person at the meeting was going to speak. Any public comments or help that are not in use. Well, planning commission will move to the public hearing, D P dash zero three dash two, three, go. I'm sorry. Mine just gave me a shit. We will move to the public hearing. For D P dash zero one dash two three, D P dash zero one dash two three, and D P dash zero one dash two three. The planning commission, we actually move that to the proposal, if the plan, Albany map, and development code of it. So, actually one, okay.
The other side.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. Okay.
It is very hard to understand what you are saying.
Okay, I'm, that, the mic is close to my, I'm not sure if there's something happening on our system, how, how about now? Okay, this, this is, this is not me, everybody in the room, I'm taking in here. If anybody in the back can't hear me? Pretty good, okay, I'm sorry, I apologize to the commissioners online for the technical difficulty.
Uh. It's better now, at least for me.
Okay, great. So. The some, the purpose of this proposed legislative amendments. To adopt the East Albany Plan into the conference of plan and begin implementing the recommendations. The amendments include implementing specific elements of the plan specifically aligned in the city, the visiting conference of. Plan now destinations with the proposed land use beginning. Changing the zoning of properties that applicable. To be consistent with the, excuse me, the East Albany Plan. Other components of the amendments include reinstating the high density residential plan designation and adding an employment designation. The Albany Development Code amendments include adding employment and high density residence only district to the Albany Development Code. In?
Uh, so the chair guy, you want to open the chair guy to public? All right.
Actually, I would feel like. Yeah, we're going to move along, again, again. So, on the agenda is the legislative public hearing on the agenda regarding planning policy, D P dash zero one two three, D P zero one dash two three, and D P dash zero one two three. And all commission members receive a copy of the agenda, pack the evidence with them.
Yes.
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 So I call for order this legislative public hearing at five twenty-one P M. If you wish to testify, there were two options available, which may describe on the agenda. Our committee members wish to declare a conflict of interest. Do any members wish to abstain from participating in the proceeding? At this time, I call for the meeting, uh, we bring the meeting procedures.
For all those wishing to testify, please be aware that you must raise an issue with enough detail to afford the planning commission and parties an opportunity to respond to the issue if you later want to raise that issue on appeal. Testimony and evidence must be directed towards the approval standards that will describe for other criteria. Conference of plan or development code that you believe apply to the decisions. If additional documents or evidence are provided by any party, planning commission may allow a continuance or leave the record open. To allow the party to use full opportunity to respond. Failure of the applicant, which is City of Albany, to raise constitutional other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval. With enough detail to allow local government or state media to respond to the issue with proofless action for the uncertainty. At this time, I call for staff to go command.
Not any better. I don't think it's any better.
Okay, I think you can hear me, I'm Anne Catlin, I work in the community development department, and I've got some other colleagues here. From our department and public works, I'll let them introduce themselves when, when the time is right. And we also have Matt Hasty with M I G, a consultant, uh, the lead. On project manager for all the consultant work that helped us prepare this plan over the last two years. So why are we doing this plan? Well, we really haven't done a plan for this area in, in a long time, twenty years ago, we looked at the area, came up with some ideas that weren't ever really officially adopted. Um, we know that as development has occurred, there, um. There's a lot of lack of options to transportation and connectivity with throughout the area. And more importantly, we need to plan ahead far into the future in order to ensure that infrastructure projects are planned for and provided. So this is, is not a, a plan this year for tomorrow, it's a plan for a long time from now, beyond twenty years. Some of the, um, goals of the plan are to, uh, create diverse and connected neighborhoods. Provide opportunities for large employers and industries, we, uh, hope that there will be some. Uh, shopping and commercial retail, maybe some mixed use at different scales throughout the planning area. We hope that the greenways and right-hand corridors and wetlands that are in the area will provide an opportunity for interconnected greenway and trail system. Um, we hope that. This planning effort will result in more functional and safe multimodal transportation throughout the area for all sorts of modes, um, not just the automobile. And that we, um, begin planning for parks and schools. And we also, we won't talk a lot about implementation, but we do have a long list of things that we can work on to try to make sure that the positive elements of this plan, uh, come to be. So, uh, many of you are in the room, and maybe this is your first. Time interacting with this project, but we did kick this project off July of twenty twenty-one, so I guess it's been eight, I don't know, twenty months or so. Um, we have been working with a variety of different groups, um, we've had open houses, bogus groups. Uh, one-on-one meetings, uh, we've mailed postcards to most of the undeveloped areas, we've had a mailing list, we've been trying to engage the public. And, um, we have advertised the public meeting, and everyone that is being impacted by a, a potential MAP amendment, receive a measure fifty-six notice, which is required by state law. So, um. What, this is a, a picture sort of showing what the land uses are anticipated to be and what the plan is, is doing, and, um. We are supposed to ensure that these kind of long-range planning efforts, and again, this is a very long-range plan, um, comply with the goals and policies within our conference of plan, which is another long-range planning document. And we do have some goals in the plan to address urbanization, we're trying to. Keep growth within, within our urban growth factories, so it doesn't spill out into the county and affect our forest land. Uh, we want to make sure there's efficient extension of public facilities and services. Opportunities for a variety of housing and neighborhoods and commercial and access to all of the services. And one of the things this plan is trying to do, one of our, um, members of our committees is like, let's try to bring Albany to East Albany. And we are hoping that we are laying the foundation for that opportunity. Uh, this is just sort of an aerial view of what it might look like in twenty or so years, and that doesn't mean that it will look anything like this, but this is just one of the images that help you sort of see what it might look like in the future. So, um, another plan goal is, um. Trying to maintain natural areas and open spaces, though the plan is really trying to ensure that our right-hand corridor, which contain our significant wetlands. And drainage ways are, um, enhanced and improved throughout the plan and protected. Um, so we propose that those are amenities that the public can enjoy rather than being in the backyard behind people's homes. So we hope that we might see a trail system and a path system that will connect also service connection throughout the area without needing to necessarily get on the road system. Um, it is really important that we provide jobs and opportunities for existing and new industries to locate in Albany or expand in Albany. And we are looking at, um, adding some employment land and in areas that are accessible. For, um, new businesses and industries, so, um. We do want to also discourage strip commercial along Highway twenty, for example, and, and create these village centers and neighborhood centers that are close to where people work. Um, and that also provide that commerce and some job opportunities. Um, housing, uh, we. We know housing is a big issue right now, and we did a twenty-year plan that was adopted back in twenty twenty, predicting needs out to twenty forty. Um, this area contains about twenty-nine hundred acres and about, um, eleven hundred acres are proposed to be retained for residential uses. And, um, it contains a thorough land area, so we're anticipating about a thorough projected for needs and continues. Uh, would need to be accommodated in, um, the areas east of Interstate five. And so that could be between twenty-two hundred new units to thirty-one hundred new units over the next twenty-year period. Um, the different varieties of plan designations and zoning, um, when property comes into the city would hopefully encourage a variety of housing types and sizes. And in different areas throughout the plan. So, um, street network, I think that Matt Hasty with, um. Angelo is going to try and end here, if he's still on, if not, I will.
Okay. I am here, can y'all hear me okay? Perfect, okay, yep, I'll give Anne a little bit of a break, um, and talk a little bit, I'll talk about transportation planning and also planning for. Um, other types of infrastructure after that, water, uh, sewer and stormwater, so in terms of transportation planning. Um, we've proposed a street, a, a future street network for this area, builds on the existing street network system, but also identifies. Kind of approximate locations or alignments for new streets in the study area. Really, the goal here is to make sure there's a good level of connectivity throughout the s- study area, um, throughout East Albany. For the types of development that we've been talking about, um, in the plan, um, so, and as Anne said earlier, um, to provide, um, facilities for vehicles. Um, cars, trucks, freight, but also for people walking, bicycling, um, et cetera, and, and for transit, so there's sort of a full range of facilities out there. So this map is showing you, um, the roads in the area, the dashed lines are new facilities, the solid lines are, um, future new facilities, and the solid lines are existing facilities. And we're assuming, uh, improvements to both of those types of facilities, I'll talk about that more in just a moment. So, next one. Um, so there are a number of amendments that will be, um, ultimately made to the city's transportation plan as a follow-up to this process. So the city's transportation system plan addresses transportation, um, needs throughout the city. Um, there are a number of things that are being proposed here, uh, I talked about, um, some new roads being proposed. There are also some, uh, connectivity improvements identified kind of in the, um, uh, Timber Maple Leaf area. Um, extending Timber Street north of U S twenty to Bullock's Drive is another, um, proposal. A lot of these things are things that the city has already contemplated in the past in its transportation, um, planning. Um, and so really, this is just kind of carrying out some of those plans. We identified potential, uh, uh, designs, sort of basic, I call them cross-sectional designs for roads in the area. Um, both for improvements to existing roads, so you see a, um, a view of that at the top left, uh, of the slide here for U S twenty. To make that road, um, better serve, again, a variety of different types of transportation users. Um, kind of in the middle, to the right, you see a potential design for the extension of Timber Ridge. Um, again, to provide a mix of, um, travel lanes for vehicles, on-street parking, and then, um, sidewalks and bicycle lanes. Um, and there's, uh, a number of different types of streets with different designs depending on kind of the. Um, whether or not this is an existing street or a new street, and also the type of land uses and development that are going to be served by the street. So, variety of recommendations in this plan and a lot of analysis that was done, um, associated with. The proposed transportation improvements and the impact of, uh, future growth on transportation, so, next one. Uh, this is showing the network of trails, pathways, and bicycle lanes on streets. Um, again, also both part of the transportation system, but this also, um, is helping meet recreational needs, particularly the pathways. So, um, again, the dashed lines are potential on-street, um, bicycle lanes or multimodal pathways, pathways that can serve bikes and pedestrians both. Um, and, um, then the solid lines are potential off-street trails. In a lot of cases, those are intended to, um, parallel, um, stream corridors, um, and as Anne said earlier, provide kind of a benefit and amenity and. And use those areas in a way that promotes, um, both travel and recreation. So, next one. Uh, just a little bit, I'll say a little bit about water, wastewater and stormwater improvements. Um, essentially, all of the work that we did in this process. Builds on work the city has already done in its faci- its existing facility master plans for these types of services, so we kind of started with those plans as a baseline. And then we identified the types of additional facilities, um, that would be needed to serve the level of growth anticipated in this area in the future. Um, so some of these improvements were already kind of in the mix or in the plans, including the two reservoirs you see in the table on this, on this map. Um, the red lines represent, um, additional, um, or new, um, water lines, so they tend to parallel those larger streets that you saw. Um, in the street network, um, diagram in the earlier slide. And as part of this process, we identified costs associated with these facilities, again, one of the follow-up actions. Would be for the city to take a look, um, at its, um, systems development charges and other ways it raises money for these facilities and, um. Adjust those as needed to help pay for this long-term, so that's one of the implementation items, next one. Pretty similar, um, pretty similar case with the sewer system or wastewater system, again, built on the city's existing plan. Identified those additional facilities that would be needed, that's primarily going to be additional pipes essentially to convey, um, wastewater, and then in some cases. Um, pump stations or lift stations to, to, um, do the work that gravity is not doing to make that wastewater flow from one area to another, so that's kind of what you're seeing. On this map and in this table, along with, again, the cost estimates. Again, these are cost estimates, we're a very long period of time, this area is not expected to be built out in the next twenty years, as Anne said, it's a much longer timeframe than that, so. Um, really kind of figuring out the details of this is, uh, is a long-term action item, but. We've done, done the work of identifying the facility improvements and the approximate or planning level costs of them. Next one. Same thing for stormwater system, um, a lot of the city's stormwater system is in place, and that's kind of what you see with the green lines on the map. And then again, the red lines are showing, um, some of the future improvements needed. Again, this is building on the city's existing stormwater system plan. And we looked at the different, uh, drainage areas in the city and identified where existing deficiencies are and where developing this area might. Add to those deficiencies and therefore those deficiencies will need to be addressed with future, um, stormwater management or retention facilities kind of throughout the area. Um, and this gives you a sense of where some of those facilities are likely to be. And that was the last one for me, and I will turn it back over to Anne.
All right, um, I apologize for the small nature of these, uh, maps that are on the screen for you, but. Um, what I wanted to talk a little bit about are some of the proposed amendments that we are, um, looking at with this plan, so, the, um. City, it would be adopting the East Albany Area Plan, which is a document with many appendices and some of this work that has been done and analysis that has been done. Into the conference of plan, but then we're looking at, um, we're trying to start. Some of that implementation when it comes to our conference of plan map, which is a really long-range map, and then also the zoning map. So, on the screen here, you see on the left is a, um. An image of the land use plan that evolved out of this one-and-a-half-year process, working with, uh, property owners and the public. And, um, you'll see a lot of areas that are not colored, and that's because those areas are mostly already developed, so we didn't look at really changing things in those areas, but. We tried to assess, where does it make sense, given, um, future road connections, um, natural resources. Traffic, where to put the residential development, where should higher density development go, where should the, which you center go? And, um, the image on the right is showing you what that might look like on our conference of plan map, and I'll. Show you in the next slide how it compares to the current map. But essentially, uh, the brownish areas on the map are identified to be mixed-use village center areas. Uh, red is a commercial, already existing commercial or planned commercial. Um, purple is industrial, and blue is also industrial or planned employment and industrial. And then the different shades of yellow, I call it kind of pea-green on this map, and, and orange are various. Combinations of residential development with the light yellow being a low-density and the, um. The low-poorish color being medium-density and the darker orange color, um, being higher-density. So if you look now, um, similar, which is on the right, as in the previous map, and we look at the current conference of plan on the left. Um, actually, I've got slightly different colors here, but you've got a lot of area outside of the city that is showing as a bright green color. And what our goal is, is to provide more certainty and to plan ahead and look at. Those areas mostly that are in what we call an urban reserve area, so there are areas that we really haven't planned for, we're trying to plan for all of those. Main areas mostly outside of the city. And then, um, in some cases, some areas that are inside of the city, um, but we are looking at, um. Some changes to accommodate future needs and also future, um, transportation corridors. So essentially, uh, we're mostly looking at areas outside of the city, but there are a few, few proposed changes that we've been working with, um. Trying to identify where we can create those walkable, bikeable, um, commercial mixed-use areas that are close to neighborhoods. But we are adding, um, a new conference plan designation and zoning district that's called employment, but that designation would allow for quite a few different zones, and I'll, I'll go with that in just a minute. But essentially, it is a more diverse, um. Designation that will allow everything from a medical office park to manufacturing, for example. And then we're also looking at, we used to have a high-density plan designation, but it wasn't really applied anywhere, so we're bringing that back. Um, people were, back in the nineteen eighties, we're, we're thinking ahead to as a grow of the city, and, um, we're bringing that back. So, um, this table. May be a little confusing, but the left-hand column lists some of our conference of plan designations, and then the right-hand column lists the different zoning districts that could be applied. For properties with the conference plan designation, so for example, we are not bringing anybody into the city, but when somebody wants to come into the city. They would look at what their conference of plan hat designation is, and then they would pick between one of the zoning districts that's possible within that plan designation. So, um, the red indicates, uh, the new employment zone and high-density residential, and we're just renaming an existing plan designation, uh, like commercial to the neighborhood village. And adding a, uh, another eligible zone, the our mixed-use residential zone. So, um, for properties in the city, we are proposing a few, now, it's like there are a lot of changes, but it's a few amendments. To the zoning where it would be inconsistent with the proposed conference of plan amendments. And, um, there are a few areas that, um. We, um, that are around commercial corridors or up along Century Drive, for example, where it's, it's neighborhood commercial, but we'd like to see more of a mix of. Maybe residential, commercial, or we've heard that we need more commercial land, so we're showing, um, some places for more commercial, more industrial or employment-type development. Um, and, um. So this map is a little more confusing, I had to show to you the. It shows you the existing zoning without, and the proposed zoning are in little boxes, but you can see what it might be by looking at the map on the right. And, and I can answer questions about that, but, um. If your property is subject to any of these MAP amendments, you would have received a letter in the mail from us, maybe more than one letter, uh, we've been trying to reach out to property owners who might have met with some of you. And, um, we are trying to, to move forward those that make sense at this time and, um, and those that were requested by property owners. So, um, the development code, um, is our implementing tool, it tells you what kind of uses are allowed in each zone, it could be that different zoning districts that have different. You know, uses allowed at heights and things like that, and we are, um, adding the new high-density residential zone, and then we're adding a new employment zone. Uh, the employment zone will be a little bit different than our existing light industrial zone, um. And our, it's for the park zone, it'll allow for a few more office types of uses and would not allow uses that have any negative environmental impact. And then we do have some mixed-use zone, that are linked in, in East Albany, we're proposing fixed-in, and we have them in other areas of the city, but we found that. Some of our mixed-use commercial areas have been built in all residential, and we were really hoping that maybe there would have been a grocery store or a coffee shop or something, so we. Are, for East Albany only, we're looking at requiring more of a mix of uses when, um, and this might be a little confusing, but in the mixed-use commercial land, you could. And this might be a little confusing, but in the mixed use commercial land, you could no longer just do residential, for example, without having some commercial. And sort of the flip side of that for the residential areas, we want to ensure that. Mixed use residential has residential and isn't all commercial and we try to make sure that. These zones are located in areas where they might provide a transition from a busy street to a lower density development. So in summary, there are different review criteria that each of these sets of amendments needs to comply with. I didn't want to spend a lot of time. Reading each one of those, but essentially our conference of plan has a lot of goals and policies in it and the statewide planning goals. Align with a lot of our conference of plan goals and I've talked about a lot of those housing, economic development, recreation, open spaces. Any proposed amendments need to be consistent with our conference of plan and with our statewide planning goals. So also these long range plans, we we need to make sure that they are addressing some of our needs and so. There a lot has changed since I moved here in nineteen ninety nine and you need to plan for the next twenty days to forty years. And especially it takes a lot of time to plan ahead for transportation connections. So. We're trying to to do that long range planning out through the future. We want to make sure that there's adequate infrastructure going on at this group. And that these amendments are achieving those goals and policies of the conference of plan and of the development code and our staff analysis concludes that these proposals do. And with that, I do want to say that kind of there are a lot of people here tonight and really appreciate everyone coming out in person and those who are on virtually. We did receive a lot of letters over the weekend. I did email all of the letters you received. Do the planning committee and we printed them all off for them to have here and I'll just summarize quickly some of the. Testimony for for both people in the audience as well as for the planning commissioners. So we did receive two letters from ODOT, the working department of. Transportation and they are actually funding funded a lot of this project and they are supportive of all of the project, but. They do have a maintenance yard on Goldfish Farm Road that is zoning industrial and they plan on that and are staying there for. Some time and they, the plan proposes that it be commercial and mixed use. Which one of the reasons for that is when and if the interstate five interchange with. US twenty five twenty is improved, it may restrict some turning movements from Price Road and from other roads all the way out to Timber. And so we may need to look at other ways to. Provide services to people staying in the hotels or at Timberland Park. And so we're looking at providing something closer to some existing residences and services there. The long term plan. So we talked to ODOT about this, but stat in hindsight, stat would recommend that the planning commission consider. Rather than doing a mixed use and commercial and just zoning the property from light industrial to commercial. Because the commercial zone allows for their use to continue and and they can expand and stay there for as long as they'd like to. I registered some images here. It's property number fourteen on the slide there. So we had one letter from actually retired in New York Lynn County and he. Wanted to express concern around making sure we were planning around wetlands in drainage ways and especially for future roads and absolutely be able to do that and try to do that with his plan. And then we heard from, I thought it changed this slide, we understood I think nineteen letters and. Most of them are from residents around Spicer Road or Spicer Drive or Spicer Way, Eighteenth Avenue. With concerns, the two different sets of concern. One is that the plan is showing Spicer Drive connecting over to Maple Leaf and there's a roundabout across there. I want to say that. Our current transportation systems plan, which was adopted in twenty ten, actually already proposed these connections. The only thing it doesn't show is. The how the Spicer Drive extension and connecting to Timber, what type of. Connection that would be, would it be a signal or would it be around the valley? But these. Changes that may be needed and this is to respond to improvements with the interstate five interchange. When traffic movements are restricted and you can no longer turn left in certain areas, you need to move traffic over to the east to Timber. So. We we hear your concerns, we've read them and I want to say that. This plan is not proposing any changes to what's already in the transportation systems plan for this area. Those. Needs have already been identified. Right after we adopt this plan, we will be working on updating our transportation systems plan. And that is the time to talk about more detailed issues and maybe alignments for. What's going to be happening in this area. And part two, what I read in some of the letters is. There is a proposal to. No longer keep that area farmland and residential or unplanned. So we are proposing some. A mix of commercial, residential, mixed use in the area, I would say around that Maple Leaf extension. With that, I want to let the people here have a chance to speak tonight, but before I do that. If you have any questions on me about any materials on the packet or staff presentation, I'd be happy to take those.
Well. Do any commission members have any questions to ask the committee commissioners? We will now be taking public testimony. First of all, in favor of application, followed by those in opposition or concerned, and finally from anyone who's new to. If anyone wishes to enter an extended consideration right now as part of the testimony, please briefly describe the extended and provide it to the clerk. For your 25th, please email it to ceaa@cityofpauli.net. This testimony that was submitted by the dead man via email at the top bonus in the city left side as part of the agenda patch. For those who registered to speak, this meeting will be called upon to present the testimony. Thank you.
No one's asking.
No.
Okay. So we don't have anyone listening in favor. So we go straight to those in opposition. So Randy Vogel. Please state your position of our apology and curate that how the owners have this deep country.
I don't know where you are. Don't kill the noise. My name is Randy Vogel, R A N D Y. My name is Randy Vogel, R A N D Y, V O G L. Wait, just give me a second. My name is Randy Vogel and I am concerned as a son or expressed my opposition to the soft adoption of the East LA plan. I own a recent speech in rehab at three six one by Spicer Drive where my business has been located for over a decade before COVID forced them to close their doors. Since we have a geographic development center serving first of energy over in Albany with the development delays and disabilities. The East LA plan proposes to connect a primary low density residential community to Walmart and the most commercial developments in the village center zone. Right behind my property. This plan includes building a new connecting road through the middle of my building. Which would have a devastating impact on our business. The lack of consideration for the people who live and work in this area is unacceptable. The proposed zoning behind me. Doesn't create any zoning buffers between this rural community and the new plan developments. The plan prioritizes car traffic over creating livable communities. Informed by my research. At the city that the reason for this new road was that it would have too great of a financial impact on Home Depot, Denny's and Phoenix Inn. In traffic had potentially traveled to Timber. However, my understanding is that there haven't been any economic studies to prove the additional point three miles based on my calculations would have any material impact on these businesses or their customers. I don't believe it would have an impact on me or my business. It appears.
He's only about forty five years old.
It appears that in my opinion, it is just being suggested by a preferred plan by the city. I've been told that the city that the road had been planned for decades and the whole neighborhood has known about it. However, after talking to the neighboring neighbors. That live off Spicer Drive and commonly say that this is not true. I've talked to, I haven't talked to a single resident who knew about this proposed new road. While I understand it, it's development in progress, it should not compete at. Should not come at the expense and quality of life of the local community. We urge you to consider the impact of this plan. Of and the people who live and work in this area and. Work with the community to try and find a solution that's fair and is safe. In conclusion, I strongly oppose this plan and request that you delay approval of this. Plan tonight to give the community, this community a chance to be heard and find compromises in the city. We've collected our voices and we'd like to have an opportunity to have a conversation with the city. As county residents, we cannot vote. We do not have city representation. The residents believe that we were not sufficiently notified. And this. Is. Doesn't present well from the planning commission to this neighborhood. This community on Spicer Drive believes that we can find some little ground that prioritizes the needs of the people who live and work in this area. But the current plan is not meet those needs. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Vogel.
I do. Excuse me, I just want to make sure I heard you correctly that the proposed plan will go through your property. Is that correct?
Correct. Yeah, the proposed plan is to 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 take out the property that I'm in, to connect from. What's currently Spicer Drive to what'll be Maple Leaf and connect over to Home Depot with a roundabout around the Veterans Forum, or if you're familiar with that holding.
So you would not be able to continue your business there?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Next up is Jeff Hanson. Again, Mr. Hanson, please state your name with the bell in front of the clerk.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Hanson, J E F H A N S O N. I live at thirty eighth way Spicer. Got a new neighborhood, although my parents have lived for thirty years. I was first learned about this Friday afternoon on Facebook. And again, think that the lack of planning or the lack of communication from the commissioners. Is in hindsight, I talked with Randy and Amy and some other neighbors over the weekend and again, I'm strongly opposed to. Right now, the last map that I saw, there's been a new information this evening for me that that I was unaware of. The roundabout literally was going to be in My Drive. Which isn't going to work. So I don't know if that's the actual plan or not, but I just strongly opposed it and and I want to thank you guys for the opportunity to speak today.
Next up is Loretta Jones.
I don't know if I can speak into the mic. Oh. Thank you. Sure. Oh, thank you very much. I don't know if you can hear me. Okay. Thank you, thank you. My name's Loretta Jones, K N E S. I live on Spicer Wayside for fifty years. And. I uphold the proposal. Because. We live on a gravel road. It's private. And we maintain that road. We have a family oriented neighborhood. And we have children. We have bus stops. From kindergarten to high school and I'm concerned with their safety. Also. I know I'm babbling on. I'm sorry. I'm nervous. But. I would like to see if you're going to put that proposal through. The only solution to save our little gravel road. Would be able to put. A block each on the north side of Spicer Drive. To stop the people from coming down. On our street. It's a tiny little area, but it's a good little area. I don't know what else to say. Um, you have any questions?
Thank you.
Did you answer that? I, like I said, I'm for safety of the children first.
Thank you so much. Any questions?
Thank you.
Any questions, commissioners, follow me. Thank you. That's up to LaCrisa Motes. And please state your names of the court of attorney, please. Thank you.
Hello, my name is LaCrisa Mote. It's L A C R E S H I A, last name Mote, M O T E. I have lived on Thirty Seventh Avenue, East of Highway Five, on Grand Bridge Road for twenty two years now. It has been a wonderful community for us. We are a family oriented community. That has a lot of different people in the area, which we enjoy. I have been fortunate enough to raise our three year olds in this area. We have loved being able to have our four H plans on premises. It helps the girls. So much to learn the value of of those plans and of that. Of that opportunity for them. We also love to have our chickens in our large garden. Many of our neighbors also have dogs, cats, sheep, ducks, chicken, turkeys, and a petational mini horse. We have had a very best well water around in my opinion. We absolutely love our well water. If the city moves in, we lose all of that. No longer will we be able to have our rams. Our chickens will be reduced down and I will not be able to afford to water my garden. My grandsons will have nowhere to keep their rams. This expansion will completely ruin our way of life. By expanding into our neighborhood, the city gains nothing but money. There is no room for more housing out there, nor do we want it. You will force us to be water and sewer. The city has nothing to offer us except higher property taxes and unneeded expenses of water. I love volunteering in our surrounding communities. I'm an active member of the Morning Star Ranch, volunteered in the American Legion Post Ten. And helped with the Altrusa Shop for Kids event every year. If expansion happens and we are forced into city limits, we will be forced to sell. If we are forced to sell, we will most likely leave the state. And I will have to leave all of those wonderful organizations and all of my marble behind. And being out of the country, we do have a slight road problem. Which would become worse for the city and home. No longer can we dispatch these cars of them in a tiny ethical manner. But instead we will be forced to use low empty poisons that can kill other farm animals. Domestic animals and wild birds. Who would like to ingest all of those lovely rats? But once you use poison, then those wild birds, namely the bald eagle. But once you use poison, then those wild birds, namely the bald eagle. Do get poisoned as well. I'd have to take them to chimney myself. As for the proposed traffic change on Spicer and Saniam. I just don't understand it, I think. And there are far less accidents on River, or more accidents on River, than there are on that area. And people will lose easy access to Denny's, to the Phoenix Inn, and to Home Depot. That will be detrimental to those businesses. I also did not know of any of this until very recently when we received a letter in the mail. I had heard of nothing prior to that. So did not have a lot of time to be able to speak without anybody and see what was going on. Thank you so much for your time, Bose.
With Mr. Colong. Thank you so much for testifying today. Now, Amy Murkling. And I believe, please spell your name for the.
Good evening, my name is Amy Murkling, F A M Y, M E R C K L I N G. We live at three five five zero Spicer Drive, and I strongly oppose the current proposal to extend Spicer Drive. To Timber through the property at thirty-six one five Spicer Drive, but home advice and the whole we have. First of all, I'm extremely disappointed in the pressure of the lack of communication from the city about, about this project. The number one goal for organizing statewide planning is citizen involvement. It states in the comprehensive plan, our land use planning development to ensure that local citizens and other affected groups, neighborhoods. Agencies and jurisdictions are involved in every phase of the planning process. They used her local who took it upon himself to share the letter that he received. With us. I spoke with several neighbors, including those who live on Spicer Drive, Spicer Drive Eighteenth and Spicer Wayside. And not one of them ever received any notification from the city on the proposed project. I understand that you are outside of the city limits, however, the city is making plans. And seeking approval from the city council on projects that have significant impacts on our properties, businesses, and families. The city council does not represent us. We do not vote for those members that serve our council. So I feel that the city has a greater responsibility to make sure that the residents outside of the city that are directly affected. By city projects are informed early on these projects and often put in the beach project. These relationships are vital to a healthy community and a positive partnership in the future. I believe that the proposed project without a neighborhood at our property values. The proposal to rehome the area east of our neighborhood to a mix of commercial and village center accommodations would allow additional. Businesses and multi-level units to be built. This will undoubtedly increase the traffic to our little neighborhood, adding to the ways of transportation. The increase in traffic, already missing street will cause initial danger concerns for our families, those with children like our. And the elderly. The other concern is the increase in foot traffic that leaves our neighborhood at career risk for property crimes that have already been. Marrying in the past few years, not to mention that this proposal would negatively impact the driving and the supervised value service. To the residents of all the specifically children. I believe there are, there are alternative transportation solutions that the city should consider that would have limited impact on the residents of our neighborhood. Thank you for hearing your concerns and hopefully we can work together in a way that will be. A benefit to both the residents and the Spicer Drive neighborhood and the city all.
Any, any questions? Thank you. Next up is Maria Sands. If you have a please, state your name as well in front of clerk, please, thank you.
Maria Sands, N A R I A, S A N S. Like I mentioned before, a lot of issues. My main thing is that I am one of those very, very tiny children who get to run free. And we don't have issues. We are on a private road, Spicer resides. We have maintained it. We just moved in, we bought the house, quickly realized that. We are a community on our street. We work together to take our road. What, what's going to happen when we go to Saniam and. We are still trying to take our road because the union quickly taking consideration of that. We have no option on one side. We have elderly crossing the road frequently, parents checking the boxes. Our road is. Our area is most where people live on the house. We don't have rental in here. We have people who take care of the house and. Particularly the community. I am, Eighteenth is going to be a gigantic issue when we have a community who has truckers. They park their, they go home to their families. They have an area where they can park their trucks. That quickly turn Eighteenth when you want to be straight. And we are all here because we know they go home to our family. That's going to be a hot mess trying to get people over there. We need to talk about possibly seeing you guys with a speed concept. There, if we are racing over at night time. And that's just going to be worse for this. Last videos of the crime rates are going to show when we pay out, we're in the most people try to hand out in the parking lot of Home Depot. Certainly, everything, everyone's urban into Home Depot is hugely impacted. And that should have gone, not getting better with the traffic. I think this solution can be made to everybody. We can be getting letters from churches around the community to our house, but anyway, you guys that have reached out to us. We have flowers coming all the time from random people. I think you guys had a possibility to reach out to us. Then there's a way to have a solution if you guys could evolve as more. That would be great.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you. So next up, I'm listening, I'm hoping I say this day, but I'm killing Mark Landeski.
Lamberdy, for that's our.
Thank you. Thank you, David, so much.
My name is Mark Lamberdy, M A R K L A M B E R D Y. I'm here as the VFW commander. Post five eight four located at fourteen sixty-nine Timber Street Southeast. And I came because I know the system of the plan in progress. Everything that I've seen shows us losing a good portion of property. Currently, we have three hundred and eighty-six members and over two hundred auxiliary members. The part of our property that we're going to lose is where we host picnics or events. Our members' kids play and what you're proposing is bringing. The road north of Walmart through the end of our property to a roundabout. And we're here to find out how we're going to get compensated for that loss of property. We don't need more parking. We need an ass for nonprofit organization. We have several events where we help nonprofits and our community raise money. It's the only way that we make money so we can keep our doors open. So we can continue to help veterans that need their benefits, financial aid. And our, our older veterans that need help. Whether it's going to help them put in. Ramps, handrails, whatever. With this plan is going to completely take those opportunities away from us. And we understand that it's in the planning stage, but I just do not, I just do not see that road come through. We get asked all the time at the VFW, when is Timber Street going to continue through? I wasn't there when it did. But I know that a lot of people enjoy the freedom to craft. I moved to Spicer Street on Timber. But I don't, I don't want to see that roundabout in front of our property, our kids play there. Unlike so many other people, we didn't receive the letter. I found out about this Friday on Facebook. So, again, communication is taught in the military. I know that you guys don't have to communicate, so a better effort to keep us involved will be greatly appreciated. Are there any questions?
Any questions?
All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any questions about hearing this online agreement on the community issue?
Yeah. Yeah, and that's not the planning commission's fault. You can even blame me, but. We did do mailings throughout the project to mostly undeveloped areas. And we did postcards twice. We've done social media blasts. And then all of the carpewaters that, where there's something change, changing. And again, the plans for the roads. That you guys were talking about, it's not a change. It's already something that is in our transportation systems plan. Everyone said a subject to, but change received a letter. Those were mailed out at the end of February. We did arrange for a postcard to go to every single carpewater. Had it scheduled February fifteenth, sent to the printers, and I got an email. The night of, the second of March, that our order got screwed up, so. Started all over again. You will be getting a postcard in the mail for the, I wanted to take that opportunity to say that. The planning commission makes a recommendation to the city council. The city council will make decisions on the plan and any adoption of any map amendments. We are actually making any changes to, to road, road plans with this plan. But the council hearing is a whole fall. We don't know what happened with the printers, but everyone should get their postcard in the mail, I think, next week or this week. Maybe it's sometimes, it's been over weeks since I've hit somewhere. But we have tried to keep people involved and we have talked to a lot of people, but the planning commissioners here are appointed to. Hear these types of land use cases, and they did not oversee our public involvement process, but we did try multiple efforts. And I did reach a lot of people, and I apologize if we didn't reach your neighborhood, but I think you're in an area that we weren't proposing to change anything. And I will say that the area south of Grand Prairie. We're not bringing any land into the city, and the area south of Grand Prairie is designated a low density. That's what we're proposing is low density. It's currently urban reserve, which is low density, so. We, we apologize. So we still have time. The council could. We have, I'm running a council meeting, but. You know, we, we tried to get a postcard out to everybody several weeks ahead of this meeting and. That was not the problem. It was out of our control, but we didn't allow about five hundred letters.
Next is Ron Larson. Skylar Bailey. Can you, can you, can you, please?
My name is Skylar Bailey, S K Y L A R, B A I L Y. I also take issue with the plan specifically around. The extension of Dunlap and then also the extension of what was to be Timber connecting the Camry. We specifically bought the ninety acre property, you know, for my kids to be able to use and play on. It's not a dead end road. It would literally cut our property in half. And not to mention that, I just don't see how it would be, I don't see it as feasible, probably over fifty percent of that proposed. Major roadway is all wetlands. So I just, I don't see how that makes a lot of sense. And then with the connection of Dunlap. The proposed roadway cuts off half of my rental. I mean, like on the map, I know it's a potential or a proposal, but it doesn't seem like that's going to work when you dead in a high level. So I just want to give my objections on record. Thank you very much.
Any questions? All right. So that is all I see as an opposition. For new term, that are right now.
Thank you, Zachary.
Good evening, Zachary, C H A R Y, Draper, D R A P E R. Representing the VFW five eight four. Again, just wanted to. Talk more about the commander. I remember he said, what you guys have been doing, we take a. The road that comes from behind Walmart. Through our property to devastate what we've built over the last four or five years. I think we've done a lot and take great pride in, in the VFW and we, we do a lot for our community. And taking that road through would devastate us as far as the VFW is. We're a very, like you said, non-profitable organization, including tons of things for the community. We have events throughout all year round, mayor committees, and it would just be a complete devastation for you guys to do that, so. Thank you.
Last one, I have with me the board is the day only. And yes, you know, your last name on five, got to the Z. Avery, here, there, we. You have one. Okay, great, thank you. Okay, well, now we take a public testimony for those who did not register this meeting beforehand. If you write in, unfortunately, concern with your camera and vacation hands, call one by the chair and you. If you're visiting my home, please, please, there's nothing dangerous remains and keep the call phone consistent. Yes.
You said, you're good, Steve?
Yes, come on, stay the name, it's not a three four on the first.
My name is Bill Doc, D O F M. And we've lived on Scrabble Hill Road now for almost forty-three years. And during that time, of course, we knew that this was going to happen eventually. But the problem that I can see with your transportation maps, the size of VFW, which I think is stupid. I don't think that needs to be done at all. Is that Scrabble Hill is bypass for the freeway when the freeway gets blocked up. Matter of fact, Swift Coast uses Scrabble Hill Road all day long, going to and from wherever they're at. When the freeway gets blocked up, then we can hardly get out of our driveway. Then you get Highway twenty and you. With the big trucks, you may sit there sometimes for fifteen minutes to get out on Highway twenty. In this proposal, it doesn't show anything there at Scrabble Hill Road in Canada. My suggestion would be to move Scrabble Hill Road over to meet Campbell Road. For the light end when, and you're going to have to go four lengths, the state's going to have to go four lengths. We're out to the radio station in order to compensate for the additional traffic that's going to go in there. I believe there's two proposed roads, one coming out of Highway twenty. And two going in Scrabble Hill Road. If that's the case, with all the, with all that housing going in, then you're not going to be able to get out of Scrabble Hill Road on Highway twenty. The traffic is just going to be tremendous. And the only way I can see that that can be eliminated. Is build a line at Campbell Road and Scrabble Hill. Moving Scrabble Hill to the west and to meet Campbell Road. And then you ride down through how by the height or the new schools. And then you ride down through, how, by the height or the new schools, you drive down some of those subdivision roads. You can't, those cars parked on the street, I don't see how a fire truck can get down through there. So all that head and let's leave, land property, the roads need to be white enough for two cars to pass. Two cars to park, one on each side, and always bicycle that. And if none of this is done. You know, you're talking about safety problem and, you know. You know, you're just unbelievable, the stress that's gonna put on your, you know, the fire people, your police department, trying to get out through some of those streets. And that's not all you have to say. And, any questions? Should be.
Does that, Mr. Respond, any help?
Anyone else want to testify?
Oh, we have enough. Come forward, the danger names, that's all.
Thank you. And my name is Tom Cole. It's B A L V I N C O L E. I'd just like to state that, uh, for the last eighty-six years of my life. I spent seventy-five in this beautiful city of Albany. And now I see where, with the new approach and proposal that the city's wanting to do on the planning of this one street. It's gonna come within about ten feet of my bedroom window. Now, we, every Monday morning, we hear the thrice truck going down, down the street, the gravel road now. And coming back out, so five thirty in the morning, every Monday morning, we're awake. Now, when the new proposal went through. How many times would we be awake then? Running ten foot away. We've had a quiet neighborhood there, lived that house for twenty-seven years. And we've had no problems, been very quiet, peaceful. Good neighbors, we have, we've had barbecues together. And now I see, just like my, they run next to me, right, the place will be out of business. I'm not gonna stay with ten foot space between me and the cars out there on my bedroom. So I think it's a very bad proposal. And I think if we use the expenditure that it would cost to put this proposal in. To redo some of our streets in this city of Albany, we'd be a lot better to walk. Thank you very much.
Any questions? Oh, oh, there's. If anyone else. See if I can register with me.
Yeah, thank you, um. I would like to call on Ron Irish, um, to just talk a little bit about the transportation system planning process. If he wouldn't mind, uh, coming up to talk about that and where's Robert Kinder's art to talk about this further.
We, we, I'm never quite sure how close it is to White, so I'm sorry about that. So, we have Ron Irish. Uh, transportation system now. Uh, as Dan mentioned, a lot of what occurred tonight, many of the promised development, transportation, uh, road alignments, road extensions. Virtually all of those road extensions shown in these five-part plan are currently in all these transportation system lines, so many of them are already there. And the time we look at those road lines, it's just that whether we have to change them before we update the T S P. Uh, the T S P was last adopted in two thousand and eight. Uh, we heard from the state that, uh, they are planning on having a city start in the next T S P update sometime around the end of this year. So, plus. Uh, there was some debate for this project about whether we wanted to move forward shortly after the compliance, no plan changes, with the T S P update. That will adjust the changes that occur with this plan, here or animal, usually intersection related. And the decision between ODOT staff and city staff wanted to make more sense to wait for a lot on those changes and do them together with a citywide T S P update, which we started in the year. Or came this year, and we're too close that T S P update basically incorporated. The changes with this plan and the T S P made more sense to wait till the whole citywide plans updated. So that's. We were right with the, the list.
Um, sure, I read, um, does that mean that there could be potential changes to some of these, um, road pathways? Um, between now and then?
There, there could be, it's possible, that's where if you wanted to make a change, that's where the community, the private commission, city council would look and implement a change, we get a T S P. Uh, the T S P, um, shows where we think the road improvements will be over the next two years. It shows which intersection improvements we need, it shows which new road stack we need. Uh, but the decision without taking, we'll set it down and leave it out, I don't know, I can't get it, okay. And the, the roads, uh, and intersections, we recorded on a slice. You know, many people here are talking about tonight, and it's, uh, people along eighteen, where did that increase traffic on eighteen? People, uh, probably ignore it, where did that increase traffic, people, the road extension from Splice Road and Naval Beach presence. If you wanted those things, leave pressure on the other, if you don't do that, it increases pressure, there's a balance there. Uh, there's also a need to look at how different manages is out there interacting with each other, and how far out of direction do we want people to go. There's, you said a question about what is moving, I can be pointing at the interchange, what kind of movement restrictions will save. And so, uh, when you look at the T S P and the road system, it is a balance of a wide variety of goals. You know, connectivity and accommodating land use and dealing with ODOT's plans and so, you know, is it possible to make a change? Yes, but it's fairly complicated. Uh, and that's why, when you look at the road system and the T S P, the entire system is modeled. You know, on a computer with volumes of, the, 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 uh, of road projections out twenty years, and we're trying to see how the system works. We take pieces in and out, and it's kind of a good process. But the individual app, you know, of the road system that we think we like, and that's how we ended up with, uh, the plan that, uh, currently applied to two thousand and ten. Uh, when we do the update. Because of the much more detailed land use, uh, of the Eastside Lotte area, that plan might be closer to looking, it'd be a more refined look. And so, uh, the resident concern to improve, not to issue this through the expenditure, that through the expenditure, this, remember, it's playing a few, uh, in the other. Uh, but it's not the.
So the transportation system plan update is the, from, uh, the stuff really address the concerns of both of. Always fears behind regarding the road changes, the way those different valid options and models concerned, and because that's the change, and right now, they're in the current plan in.
Yes, and, and if you don't, you'll be, you're happy, and usually is, uh, recommendations for compliance zone changes, now, which are considered, which are not considered. Which you can't really consider, so I just want to offer you T S P updates, which are. So the place to do that is with the T S P update.
Great, I have one question for, I have a question for Ron.
Better question for Ron, if that's apparent. Please, I'm, I'm, sorry. Sorry. Uh, my question for you.
Can you state your name?
Yeah, Randy Vogel, R A N D Y, V O G L. Uh, one of my questions for you, Ron, is, one of the concerns that I've heard from the community tonight is the zoning that's being proposed back behind where my office is located at. Um, and Timber Road and actual zoning classifications, would that be something that we deal with tonight, or would that be part of that transportation plan as well?
Uh, that would be something you would deal with tonight.
Okay.
If that is a land, a, a compliance zone change, that is what the private commission would take recommendation council on.
Okay.
The road system behind it and the road system in front of you, that's part of the T S P update.
That makes sense. Thank you.
So, Ron, before you go, um. So I've heard of a few people, uh, that the roads are gonna be coming through their property. Is, so is this eminent domain that we're gonna be, the city's gonna be. So they're reimbursing the owners for that property, how is that happening?
Road extension is happening in a variety of ways. Uh, uh, foreign way, the most common, uh, is a property that decides to develop. And as a condition of that development is, is a condition dedicated by the builder by the director. So in those cases, which is ninety-nine percent. Uh, is the developer, the owner of the property, that is, that essentially decides under what avenues, that avenue they decide to develop. There are a few instances where there's a, a missing segment of, of fairly major, but the city council decides that is critical of where it can be located, the city initiated construction of that gap. Uh, so a, a, a good example might be several years ago, in Normal, and the city council looked at. Uh, the area, uh, Normal County Road and, uh, which, uh, which, you know. Decided that the expanding, uh, Normal County Road north, and I think it gives something to me, makes sense. And the city initiated that project, and in that case. The city negotiated with the property, couldn't reach a voluntary agreement, and the city council had to decide whether to ban the project or do some of that. Uh, so it does happen, it's fairly rare, but it does happen occasionally, usually involves a major road. That council decision, there's some critical candidate needed to go on gap.
So, in the cases where property owners stated that the roads are coming on their property, would this be an example where eminent zoning would be used?
Um, it, it could be, so, and your, your Volvos property, for instance. Uh, has a road, apparently a major road showing going through it. It will connect over to Timber and Intersection Naval Bay. Uh, his property is probably not large enough to develop at the time, he built that, he never do that. And so there would probably, in this case, be some other things, some other event that triggered that road construction. It could be in, I, I, ODOT making changes in the interchange at I Y, eliminating movements and generating a need for this new connection. It could be development of property, leased enough, for some reason to trigger the connection, it could be a lot of development itself. That, you know, change, triggered the need for this. And, and all of those cases, there will be a city council decision about whether or not it warranted building this road connection, and if it did, we would try to negotiate for us. And that situation, that was the one a lot of us lived under, or, well, since we adopted our first T S P in nineteen ninety-seven, and we showed road extension there. So the situation's not, not new, and it's been there for twenty-seven years, at this point, we haven't seen any progress. But we don't know when that might be in the future.
So, and so that, with all those conversations, take those doors, have transportation system plan update. Correct, so that's not over here, of course, but we're, we're here, we'll get a call. And, uh, we'll make sure it was clear on the road, the planning commission, uh, expectation for us, and, uh. You would be able to notify folks when the transportation system plan is gonna be updated, so people can weigh in and bring forward their concern to help create that topic, is that correct?
It's a, it's a big citywide project, we, we have the same, very similar problems generating public interest at. Uh, and the early stages, okay, as you think about, okay, we're looking at a T S P update, where should we maintain, we're going into it, we don't know. And so, individual property owners go into it, right, I have any concerns. Uh, but what comes out of it at the end, I have concerns about, they wouldn't, if they weren't even aware of where this was going, might not jump in and take it in the other's track. It's really hard to get people involved, that, but it might be a year and a half or two-year-long process.
Perfect. I mean, I, I. So that would be not, would be there. And that's going to be notification, obviously, but everything possible to naturally enable schedule, right? Thank you, I appreciate their comments. So then.
Yeah, thank you, um. If you may have questions, I mean, still, I did wanna just respond to, um. The last gentleman, that's why I thought I heard it was Mr. Bach, about Scrabble Hill and Kennel Road. Um, that is something that we, um, talked about, but a, um. A lot of that, the Kennel Road is outside of the city, um, urban growth boundary, and we haven't talked to Lynn County yet, but that's kind of something that would be a long-range plan, working with Lynn County to consider whether that's a possibility. And I think Ron wanted to speak to that, but we don't have it in this plan, but that's not to say that that's not something that we know is needed. But before Ron goes, uh, I can pull up a map at any time, just wanted to let you know. We're trying to show future east-west connections and north-south connections, so that traffic gets dispersed throughout the area, so that it's. Not being concentrated only on Goldfish Farm Road, only on Scrabble Hill Road. Uh, and we are trying to provide more connectivity to encourage people to maybe not have to use their car, um, at some point, so. It takes planning way ahead in order to try to make those connections happen when developed, and of course, uh, back to you, Ron.
Yeah, with the Scrabble Hill, Kennel Road offset, I don't know, I would point. The task force that we're working on, the state board groups, did suggest that it'd be a good idea to realign those streets and bring them together with the common intersection, and that doesn't make a lot of sense. And it's the intersection, not to be your control, insulate, no rounding out, it's a bit more like more efficient. The first thing we had in our minds was, which of the two roads should be rearming? Uh, should, should Scrabble Hill open to the left, should Kennel Road open to the east? Uh, and it was complicated somewhat by your, your planning area, basically being the south side of the highway. And so as part of this plan, uh, we basically then was prompted, and we deferred that decision to the T S P. And it doesn't really affect the land use. So, because it was more than just the city being involved, and it was a joint city-county decision about which side of the highway the road would launch at, place where. We got a better place to have that discussion, was what the T S P updated. But it is on, yeah, that, when we get to that, T S P is going to realign those, at least at this point, I don't know, it's on, it's on the south.
And lastly, I just wanna say that this is a plan for the very long term, the city is not bringing in any. Property, the property owners determine when their property comes into the city and when the property is developed. This provides that plan, um, for everybody around properties, when they come into the city, what uses might be allowed there. Um, so the city is not expanding, uh, I have no interest in expanding, we're just putting a plan in place for areas that may come into the city over the next twenty to forty years. Um, but I said, means we have around jobs and housing and, and commercial use. Thank you.
Yeah, okay, um, and, like we know, this Lucrecia boat, we talked about her animals and other, and the animals there, low water. She felt all that was going to be restricted with this plan, uh, is that the case?
No, um, I, I don't have on the screen here, so I was trying to zoom in to the areas that we've talked about most. Um, south of Grand Prairie, there's a neighborhood in forty and forty-first, the act, and quite a few people from that neighborhood at the open house at Fairgrounds. Um, my friend Char Mads lives over there, and she, she was there and a couple other neighbors. Where, that is outside of the city limits, we would not annex that in, we don't have an interest to annex that in. Um, carpeters would have to decide to annex in, and there's, you may have to be adjacent to city limits, and there have to be city services available, there are certain tests before we would even allow. Annexation or consider it, right? Um, development is coming, you know, there's development on West Side Freeway, but that area is still, there's a lot of developed land there, and then to the north, it's, um, industrial land and. Um, and I, I can't imagine in my lifetime that that area would come into the city. All we did was look at that area staying low density residential to match what it currently is, if it were, if it comes into the city, it would be at low density residential.
Any other questions for staff?
And I did have another question from Nellie.
Uh, I just heard about you, about the one more work, you know, maybe, 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 maybe.
Sorry, uh, Stanley, L A R B A I O U I. Um, I don't know if I missed it, but was that the only proposed park in the whole plan, was the one going between the two schools?
The parks, master plan, they have some general locations for future parks. We didn't put them in here because given the plan, they may be looking at different areas, but parks are allowed in almost all the zones, and they really liked the idea of providing, if they can, linear parks, parks along the open spaces where there might be park parks and, and playground, um, and having a trail system. But we are not, um, showing what was on the parks master plan, uh, here. But they do show a couple of other ideas for where they think they will need parks. And a lot of that's based on where development will be and what it will be. Um, we know that a lot of this development here may not happen for another thirty years or so. But they did show a location in, off of Scrabble Hill Road, um, and then I think another one, um, south of Highway twenty. Yeah.
Right. Any other questions for these staff members?
Maria, S A N S, A R I A, S A N S. So what is the plan, if you guys do, bring our, well, our street necessarily into city limits? For when we, you know, our master lets, we probably don't care about that. Um, we were converting people's, we bought ourselves that with that dimension. Um, what, what is your plan? I mean, you guys don't have to order roads, but you guys do, what do you do about our road?
So when, when, when property is brought into the city, so if right now you're in the U G B or, or what we first observe in French, so outside city limits within our growth boundary. There were times where you decided to, we annexed into this project. Uh, if there's a private road there, that road would likely remain private um, until such time that it was brought up to a city standard, or there was an interest by the city in taking over the, the maintenance of that area, I mean, that it gave the city, and Ron, correct me if I'm wrong there, but, um, again, when we talk about properties coming into the city, this, this is not for annexation or any common type of annexation for the, for folks that are outside the city now, it requires you would come in petition out to annex and, these voluntary annexations. There are some, right, outside circumstances and, and areas along the side, where we've got properties that haven't built, that exist with them, that can't intercept it anymore, and then connect with the work at that time in order to be certified, these terms, you have to annex them, but, but, that's a different issue.
Yeah, so would the plan, the, the, we did, and now we, we don't, that, that.
This, this, this plan is not to annex in any property. We're not, we're not expanding the city limits, we're not expanding the U G B. This is, uh, this is just a plan. So in order for, if you're in that urban fringe, which is an outside city limit, where you can come into the city limits, and then there's certain criteria that, that you have to have, which is, are you able to be certified to utilities, which means are there utilities there? Are you adjacent to the city limits? So if your property active right now, that, they're going to do those two criteria, and after the main one, you can annex, but again, that's if you want to, you don't have a process or, or any plans to do for annexation, and that required both, of, of.
Right. I don't even feel that, figured the law, I think, uh. He is prior to the, to the.
I was going to, uh, because the gray side feels like a private street, but it's not. So it's a, it's public right away, under county jurisdiction. County's having building, last in fire highway, in a way that prevents them from spending any money on maintenance of the road. They didn't done that, respect the wayside.
Yeah.
So it's a really odd case. Uh, in, in similar cases, it's just a bad calculus. Odd case, a timber, so I have like one, the exact same scenario, public right away, privately maintained. So in the event that someday it annexed into the city, it raises a question about, at that point, who, who's going to work on the road? Because when the annex is in jurisdiction, there's a certain change from the county to the city. So the discussion at that point, the city won't assume it. But at the moment, it's a public road, privately maintained.
So why does the city, even though we have the city, they won't touch our water? We had a problem with pipes, they said, you have to fix it. Even though it's affecting all of the water. Well, as a private owner, had to fix their pipes. So.
Are, are you all Welsh?
Yeah.
City water?
Yeah, city water.
Uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna theorize, and I'm just guessing now, that, uh, somewhere behind the meter, not between the water and the meter.
That was the main one.
That I don't know the answer to that much.
And, and you asked what they said, is, you know, get, we have to get together to do our problems, we're, we've done it in the community. But when, you know, the water might break and effects, is going to affect everyone. That's what city water came to my house, and will be, that you guys can get together to do that, and you need to get through us to the road together to, to pick the pipe. And it ended up being a simple solution for us, but in the beginning, it was, we were on the day of the whole past pipe, everything made, was on the corner of Eighteenth and Specialways, and he said, H R I S was the special way that go back, and he was.
I can, I can try and talk to the, about this after the beginning, I'm not, I'm not sure what happened in your case. Uh, whatever it is, it's kind of outside of what the land use part is, and it does sound odd, so I'd like to hear that.
Yeah.
Any more questions for these committees?
Ron, when you have the, uh, single line in, for the end of twenty-three, uh, will that, the city be notified? Everybody be notified of that?
Of the T S P update? There'll be, there'll be a couple of chapters, but it probably won't be individual physical naming or co-stars going to every property in the city.
You know, there's media, newspaper articles, and, uh, press releases, Facebook page, and have a couple of
a link on our website to the T S P update. We have a link on our, our website to this process, and we still miss people, so it is very difficult to get everybody to have a large project.
And starting from the, the, the communication, I don't know.
Okay, thank you.
We will add, I'll make sure everyone email that I have is provided to whoever has set up so that they can be included in the, um, public process.
Yes, I, I was going to say, so if anybody in the public wants to be notified, they can contact you?
I will take everyone email that I have, and means, um, we can work with public work staff and just let them know, here are some interesting parties to start with, when they develop a mailing list for the project that we've already got most started.
Okay, so who should people contact if they want to get on that?
I was taking contact, me, I guess, I mean, like I said, I've already got everyone that already sent me an email this weekend. I got your email, um, and, uh, but if you didn't send me an email, uh, you're welcome to do that. Okay, thank you.
Any more questions? Any more questions? Ted, do you have any, are you raising your hand? Commissioner Ross? You're distracted.
No. Um, there was someone who had their hand raised online, but it appears that they lowered it. So I'm not seeing any hands raised.
Okay, great. I hope I didn't miss the need to reach those who got a question online, I already got them to speak. Right. Any more questions for staff or the commission? Anyone see that, respond to staff? No. Hey. Does anyone have procedural questions they would like to raise at this time? If so, please bring it in, or we call upon our, your, any, by phone, please unmute yourself, state your names, or the hearing will be called on. Questions? The fair is publicly, meeting here is closed at six fifty-four P M. Does the planning commission, mission discuss the case that I've asked of that, how do you approach? Dave? Okay, Diane?
Well, I'm, I'm a little uncomfortable voting on this tonight. I think there was a March twenty-seventh date, a possible continuation date, and I think I would just like a little more time to digest some of this material personally. I don't know how other commissioners are feeling.
Stacy, what does that? Not this one, okay. Anyone online have any comments, questions? Well, there's a proposal from Diane to postpone the hearing until the twenty-second, plus the proper.
So the hearing is closed, you can continue deliberation on March twenty-seventh if you would like to. Um, deliberation is post-hearing, so that means that there will be no more comments or testimony that we can provide you to be making a decision based on the materials before you, and from all the letters and emails that I've provided for you and testimony that you heard this evening.
I can see you have not, I think, this is a, this is a bunch, this is a bunch of.
I have a question. And this question might be more for Ann, but I would like to know, um, downstream effects in terms of possibly delaying a vote on what is in front of us tonight from a timeline perspective.
So the council hearing is scheduled for April twelfth. Um, I mean, if you don't want to make a decision this evening, you're recommending to the council who will make the decision and hold a public hearing, but the March twenty-seventh date um, would still work for us to turn everything around and get it mailed out to the planning, uh, sorry, to the city council for their April twelfth date. I have to have those materials ready by the end of the month, this month, so. I mean, I think we could still do it, it, it's a little bit tight, but we tried to scatter the meetings far enough apart in case that was to happen.
Thanks, Ann.
Mr. Vermaat?
I agree with Ann, uh, or I'm so sorry, with Diane, that having additional time to digest some of this would be beneficial if we're able to have additional time to deliberate.
Yeah, same.
No. That would be my vote as well, which is on seven.
I don't think you have anything on that meeting agenda, it was just, you just, we need to make sure we have a format in that meeting. So you can confirm that you won't be there. That sounds good to us.
So, still, I have to, you. Phil, Commissioner Ross? Are you okay with us extending this to March twenty-second meeting? And we're going to have a meeting?
Yeah, it's a little difficult to hear you, it's kind of echoey. Uh, if I made a comment, a comment to sum up this evening, I think we should all realize that uh, plans of this magnitude are going to be difficult. There's going to be a lot of little details that will have to come out, uh, during the process. Also, this is unique in terms of what we're attempting to do in Albany is to create a, a more dense expansion of the urban growth boundary. In the past, we've kind of hopped out and avoided these issues. Oh, well, this little existing neighborhood here, we'll just jump over it and spread out across our farmland. The fact that we're trying to keep this dense and tight just means we're going to have to deal with these issues, and there's always going to be some conflict. I think, uh, we owe it to ourselves to think about it and do it right. But sometimes you have to make a decision to go forward in order to work out all those little issues. So it's not going to be easy, and I'm more than happy to go along with the continuation uh, so that we can contemplate what it is we're doing, and I would encourage staff to take this in and see if they can see some ways to help mitigate some of these issues, but inevitably, there are going to be conflicts, and we ha, and we have to be the ones who decide those.
Sure. I just, I just wanted to be clear with the, the continuation you're proposing is, is a continuation for deliberation only. So when we re-adjourn on the twenty-seventh, it's not reopening the public hearing, it's, it's for deliberation. There, there's a process, we want to leave the record open. Uh, I just, the reason I bring up precaution is with the, the, basically the, the record closed, that means you cannot receive any new information, there's no discussions with, uh, external sources, without, we can say the X part, say contact. And I, it's not that, and it, it's not that, I'm discouraging that, I'm just making sure that you're aware that that, that's what we're talking about.
So when we read the meeting on the twenty-second, this is for deliberation, as per, for, no outside influences in additional contact, it's just for deliberation, it has to be, we, we.
Yeah, we as staff actually very conscious to not introduce anything into the record that everybody here hasn't had the opportunity to hear, because that wouldn't be really fair, and we're making a decision based off of new information. So there's, just want to be clear about that, that we're not, we're not going to be entering any new information, so there's definitely staffing that is, uh, difficult.
Any others to bring to this? All right, so on continuation, on so March twenty-second meeting, on further deliberation, only on that we charge a lot of the, the, to us, and happy that we bring to that.
Does that mean that we, the next public hearing, we can't introduce more events?
Okay.
So, the next public hearing would be the city council, April twelfth, and they would consider the planning commission's recommendation, and at that point, it's really like, almost like starting over. They will consider the planning commission's recommendation, that they can make their own decision based on the evidence that is presented to them.
What time in April, on the twelfth, what time?
Uh, it's at six o'clock, Wednesday, April twelfth. Same group and same procedures to sign up. And you will be getting our postcard, and we'll hopefully, and you know, a couple weeks later.
Thank you again, Anne, and, and Rob, and David, and all the service, and thank you for the wonderful public, who gave and provide also view, and Corin Hall, and so to show interest. We appreciate you being here, using this room with me, because of the issues that are on the pocket, well, all that to be the public, well, thank you for being. All right. Moving on to the agenda, this is the commission, we have the, that's the chair and the last ten. And, who goes, have the letter chair amongst here for pretty interesting for open nomination. Are you getting nominations of the commission chair?
Joanna, I'm so sorry, but we can't hear you.
I'm sorry, uh, we're opening up the nominations for the, the, up chair. And any nominations for the commission chair?
Commissioner Miller, I have a nomination.
You have the commissioner lunch.
I would like to nominate yourself, Commissioner Miller, here.
Second.
Second. Okay, April. And the nomination for now, oh. On my most, you know, there, is that for me? Right. And there's, we have only one nomination, but you can just, yeah, you know, move home. Also, that's, so I'm just, yeah. I'm sorry. Oh, I don't, I don't know. Eight, eight. And we always try to be very huge, because they're different from their own. Love the Do the same thing for the vice chair. Okay. Well, that's the vice chair. A public nomination, are you not being supported by the commission or vice chair?
I nominate Anne.
Second.
Second.
Does the member have a nomination? Yes. Are there any more nominations registered here?
Move, move the nominations close.
Thank you. The nomination for now, oh. There was only one condition, now we propose, murder vice chair, of Diane, considered, yes, sorry. There's only one nomination, no vote, so that Diane, I think, is active. For me, we'd be all over the day, we're the odd, I hope you know. Right, for the last. Here is one for you, is that?
And I think we have three people that serve as representatives from the planning commission for hearings board. And typically cases that are a little bit more straightforward, but still require a name use process at this level with the planning mission decision would be made by the hearings board. They're often what we call, well, they're just a little more straightforward, not complicated like this. But you might have a little simple case that you haven't heard any opposition from neighbors or it's a really small development or something that might go to the hearings board. So I don't know who is currently serving on the hearings board. If anyone is still on the planning mission that's on the hearings board, I could try to look it up online, I guess. And Sonia.
And Sonia. And you.
So I guess we could just decide whether it could elect and continue with the current slate or other members with the duty. They occasionally will meet in lieu of a regular planning mission. There might be hearings or meeting on Tuesday or Thursday late afternoon sometimes just to hear a simple case.
It's a little It's usually a bad long time commitment. Once every four or five months it comes up, so it's not like it's a, a week where you're ready.
I think it's a little bit more often than that. We just had one and then we'll have another one on the twenty third.
It depends. It keeps the full group from having to meet as frequently, essentially.
So the tradition I'm bringing, um, thanks to the young people now for this year. This one was, I'm just unusual to have this meeting on the twentieth of January.
And it could be because we are bringing forward a lot of long-range legislative items, which take a lot of time under agendas. And we'll have quite a few with the climate-friendly areas and how the implementation plan is possible that just during this busy time, we, the hearings board may meet a little more than normal, but there isn't a normal schedule. It's just as cases come through the landing system, we try to take the simpler ones to hearings board. And Joanna, you can nominate somebody else to serve if you'd like to bring.
And looking for spacing, would you like to serve on the hearing board? It's, it's a very evening status at four o'clock. It's on the twenty third, it's in the green, very, allow all the information provided at a time this month. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you. So yeah, stage is about, and hearing will be on the hearing board. And then in the
I have a question. If somebody is not able to attend the evening fine, uh, two?
I don't know. I think that we still go with the forum, as long as there are two of the three, I think they can still meet. So we can also look at times that work for the three that are serving. You know, we try to work, find a time that works for people to attend. Sometimes we just find that late afternoon, we can catch people, but they're busy. It needs, but it needs to be a different time. We can, we can also look at the time of those hearings for meetings. Thank you.
I think the last meeting we had, just two, because you
I've made for this meeting, so I do, so it's with the two then.
Yeah, that works.
Right, you got, you do. That one is.
Well, I did give you a preview that not just this project, but pretty much every month between now and May, you will have a legislative plan type of that has upcoming. So the next up would be parking reform, I'm sorry, with my agenda, but the amendments that you've talked about at the last planning mission, work session on March sixth, we are packaging up all of that and I have that ready and set off to the state by the end of the month. But I think that, correct me in my calendar, but I think we're looking at a May first or April, for a date in either April or May for the planning mission. And I just can't remember, but it could be that it's around dates. And then we also have the housing implementation plan, which is looking at policies and things we can do through barriers to certain types of housing. So that will be another, that's just not be with land and then we can start on the to-do list. So those two items, I'll be very important. I just forgot to bring my big calendar with those dates and we look and see if we could. So March one, he said this is going to happen and then May first is the climate-friendly and affordable communities parking reform package that we all hear. So we will take your comments, make modifications and turn it into code language, what we have it. And you will hear those May first and then I think the late, the second meeting in May is the housing implementation plan. So that could be May fourteen, fifteen. And we were fully staffed and we haven't had any staff changes, so we're not about that.
Thank you. So Anne, this will be the next D E D dates and we have a continuation on March twenty seventh. I'm thinking to confirm the deliberations on the public hearing for tonight. So with that, I call me adjourned at seven twelve P M. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you.